And my understanding is that staff has, staff's presentation is gonna take about thirty minutes, no more than thirty minutes. I'm asking a board members to hold off on their questions unless you really need to ask us something for clarification. With that in mind, I'm gonna, should I call on Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Good evening, everyone. We are very happy to be here this evening talking about some research that the board asked us to provide about boundary processes, specifically about the sixteen factors that were brought back in October. I need to start by saying that I'm extremely proud of the work that the team has done to not only look at the research behind those sixteen factors, but to also talk about the impact of those factors here in Fairfax County. So the way that the presentation is actually created this evening is that we'll talk a bit about the research and then we'll talk about what the practice is here in Fairfax County. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg tonight. Of course, we have Jessica Gillis, who's our Director of Facilities Planning, and we have Lady Haruda, who's our Director for the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement. And they're going to do a lion's share of the presentation this evening, tag teaming back and forth. So, Mr. Plattenberg.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And, you know, it's really exciting that we're continuing this conversation. If you recall, we began this discussion in October of 2018 about the presentation of the information review of Policy 8130. In the presentation, we introduced the sixteen factors that were commonly considered by school divisions in making boundary changes, the data gathering and the research that Ms. Gillis and the planning team had done at that time. But today's presentation describes the findings from ORC, the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement Areas, and the educational research on those factors that Mr. Smith had mentioned, both student diversity, travel time, social connections, and overcrowding. We do believe that this, this discussion is really to provide more background and to inform the board's prioritization of boundary change factors incorporating that one Fairfax lens. The first thing is the purpose of the presentation to the school board. As I said, it's to mention the ORC findings. Thank you, I appreciate it. Really, take a look at these impact on the factor of equity and efficiency and excellency, and then review them related to the research, our practices, and really link those research findings to the strategic plan, and then looking at really the background to inform the board's prioritizing of factors using that lens. I think this is gonna be a really ongoing development of a conversation because there are so many different variables. If you recall, looking at those other school divisions that Ms. Gillis and her team had provided previously, it was a myriad, and the data that we had provided to you showed a broad spectrum of different school divisions of similar size and the reasons and rationale of what they chose to be their prioritizing factors. On the next slide, we're gonna be talking about the timeline of the boundary policy process. In October, as I said, we reviewed the common practices. In February now, we're reviewing the educational research on boundary and related FCPs practices. And then in March, we hope to provide guidance on goals for the boundary policy and prioritize the factors to include in a upcoming boundary policy. For the factors, yeah.
Sorry. On this slide, you can see the sixteen factors that were introduced in October. The ones that are highlighted here in blue are the ones that actually appear in our own policy here in FCPs. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through these sixteen factors and talk about which ones were supported by the educational research, because that was what we were asked to look into, and then also talk about what the remaining factors look like. So here's the list of the eight factors that were summarized in the educational research as related to boundaries as well as related to achievement. So all of the educational research really ties these boundary factors to achievement. And you can see that of these, only some of them appear in our current policy. Those again are the ones in blue. Of the remaining factors, these were not supported by the educational research, but they are important for school divisions to consider. They're things that are related to neighborhood impacts as well as efficiencies or resource, resource use. So, school divisions in general recognize many of these as tied to things like resource stewardship, as well as, in our case, with our strategic plan, they could also be tied to our caring cultural goals. And again, the ones in blue are the ones that appear in the current FCPs policy. Now I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail about what was found in the educational research. And in particular, I'm going to highlight four different things as I go through them and also tie them to our strategic plan. All of these are tied to achievement, so they all tie in some way to student success. And you'll see in the bottom right that we try to put the little logo so that you can see which ones they're tied to. So the first area that I'll talk about is student diversity. And in this case, the research supports that boundaries can have a significant impact on the demographics and socioeconomic makeup of schools. And that's not surprising. But what the research also shows is that having a greater balance in school membership is, has been linked to positive outcomes, especially for minority students as well as students living in poverty or low SES students that generally in FCPs we define as those who are receiving free or reduced meals. And then program placement in schools can also affect their socioeconomic makeup. So if you bring certain programs into schools, it can draw certain demographics into a school. If you put it in another school, it can draw that same demographic to another school. So in general, student diversity is tied to three of the areas that were, or three of the factors that were presented in October: demographics, socioeconomic status, as well as achievement. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Gillis, and she will talk about how this plays out here in FCPs.
Thank you. So currently, we have several attendance islands, and we know that the socioeconomic characteristics in an island may not match the base school. We have at least one where we have about ninety percent FRM in the attendance island and less than two percent in the base school population. We have elementary and middle school feeder patterns. So we can identify some more thoughtful feeder patterns that can better balance the socioeconomic diversity. Current program placements such as AAP, our immersion programs, AP, IB, or Magnet. We have student movement that affects the makeup of both the program school and the base school. So when we have students leaving their base school to go to a program, that changes the FRM or the socioeconomic status of that base school as well as the receiving school. And there was a study done in 2013, which we're calling the FRM Enrollment Study today. It is being updated by ORC and will be presented to the school board later this spring.
And again, that was the study that we have referred to as the Tipping Point Study in the past.
So the other, the next area that I'll talk about, the second of four, is travel time. And this was related through sleep. So the, there is not specific research that ties travel time to achievement or to better outcomes, but longer commutes can cause students to have to get up earlier in the day or potentially stay later at school or get home later. And there is that large body of research, as you all know, that insufficient sleep is related to reduced motivation, problems with engagement and concentration, as well as decreased problem-solving skills. And so this is related to the factors of geographic proximity, transportation, as well as achievement, again, and ties to our strategic plan through resource stewardship as well, as well as caring culture.
So the practice side, we pulled together the travel times. These are each bus routes. They're not the number of students, these are the number of routes as identified in travel times in minutes. So less than thirty minutes, thirty to forty-four, forty-five to fifty-nine or sixty minutes or longer. And we identified them into subcategories: general education, special education, AAP, Magnet, attendance islands, and then Title I. In Title I, we have to note that these times are also included in the other categories such as AAP or Gen Ed. And also, we don't provide transportation to immersion or APIB, high school curricular programs, but it was worth noting that they would have an impact potentially on travel times separate from our bus routes. And so each percentage is a breakdown of the total number of, for example, Gen Ed, but, uh, general education bus routes, there are the total. And then we broke down the total, ended the percentages for each of the subcategories of time.
So the third area that's supported in the research has to do with social connections. And I understand that there was a lot of interest in this particular factor that was found in the research. Unfortunately, the research really is kind of mixed in this area and doesn't necessarily unequivocally tell you exactly what direction to take with this. There's some research that supports that split feeders have a negative impact on students' social connections as well as potentially their achievement, but that tends to be among average or high-achieving students. While there are other studies that show that that kind of a pattern of going to a split feeder or going even a divergent path where you're one of the few students that are going to a new school from your prior school actually can have positive impacts on students who are minority students or lower-achieving students. So the, the research here is pretty mixed in terms of whether it supports split feeders or not. But in general, what's found is when you have a pyramid kind of scheme where you have multiple elementary schools feeding into the next level or multiple middle schools feeding into the next level, that having that mixture of both your past social connections as well as the opportunity for new social connections is probably the most positive or the most neutral of the different kinds of ways that schools can feed into one another.
As you know, split feeders are not uncommon in FCPs, mostly due to our legacy boundaries. We have identified legacy boundaries as a result of new development, new schools, previous boundary changes, as well as integration. So we have forty-four total straight split feeders. When you count all of them together, it's seventy-three. We also have our split feeders for programs such as advanced academic programs, our immersion programs, magnet schools, special education programs, and they also have, can contribute to impacts on social connections.
And then the final factor that we found in the research that was related to boundary changes had to do with overcrowding. Overcrowding can be defined, the National Center for Educational Statistics defines it as capacity in relation to the number enrolled in the school where you have a hundred-five or high, percent or higher over enrolled versus capacity. And in terms of overcrowding, it can have a significant negative impact on both teaching and learning, and it can also, or is sometimes related to larger class sizes. In general, this is related for us to the factors of capacity as well as achievement and ties into our, both our resource stewardship and our student, sorry, our student success goals in the strategic plan.
So the next three slides should look familiar to you. Those are our current capacity maps that we have included in the CIP this year. The darker orange color is a hundred-and-fifteen percent or more of capacity utilization threshold. And we consider those to be schools that have a substantial capacity deficit. On the other end of the scale, we have the darker blue, which is less than eighty-five percent, and these schools are considered to have a capacity surplus.
Sorry, these are the current, this is the current map?
This is based on current, yep. So we have the high school, or, I guess we're on high school, yep, high schools, middle schools.
So in general, in terms of what research supports related to boundaries, the best research-based guidance is really around the three areas. First is to address any kind of overcrowding, and it makes sense to do this by utilizing existing building capacity when possible. To balance student socioeconomic diversity in schools, and again, programs can be used to help with that balancing. And then lastly, to minimize travel time.
So again, recapping the timeline of our boundary policy process, we mentioned the beginning of the discussion in October of 2018. We talk about tonight, our conversation, as it continues with the information that we've provided you, and I'm sure there're gonna be a lot of questions associated with that. And then looking forward to March to furthering this discussion and really hopefully providing guidance on the goals for the boundary policy, and also to try to prioritize some of the factors to include in a subsequent boundary policy. So with that, we'd like to thank you very much. I think Mr. Smith has some concluding remarks.
I just wanted to say that you'll note that we have a lot of supporting information in the appendix that provides you information of around other school districts across the country and the factors that they use to prioritize for boundaries. And we also have some information regarding Fairfax County schools in terms of capacity and percent attending by FRM. So again, much more supporting information in the appendix that we are also, will be ready to answer questions about.
And you also have a research report from ORC, correct? Wow, nicely done. I thought it was gonna take a half an hour, but eighteen minutes, well done. With that, perhaps we can go home by eight-thirty. So I have Ms. Hines.
Thank you very much. I really, I appreciate the way we're labeling all of this equity and excellence, right? Because I think that is the challenge that we ultimately have, right? In, in everything that we do. So I just had a couple of questions. We're balancing or comparing sort of geographic proximity versus demographic integration in the building, right? And I think that's some of what we're trying to do as we look at these slides. And it looks to me like geographic proximity, even though we feel in our hearts like it's very important, the research doesn't show a lot of connection between distance and student achievement, whereas the research does show a connection between integrated classrooms and achievement. So am I right about that?
Generally, yes. The time really comes into play if students are, if it's impacting their sleep. But beyond that, travel time itself does not, is not related, as you said.
Great, so thank you. So just one other question on Slide seven, which is the slide about research showing that a greater balance, it's the second bullet, greater balance in school membership. And I, I assume that that means diversity in the classroom, or at least diversity in the building. I think that's what that was referring to.
Yes.
Has been linked with positive impacts on the achievement of minority and student, students with low SES. It's my understanding that the research also shows a positive effect on all students of integrated classrooms, that it's not just the minority and lowest SES students. I could try to find that research, but I wonder if you didn't find it?
Um, there is some research that relates that it has some impact as well. There's a little bit of counter-research to that also. But in general, as long as you don't have a majority low SES school or a majority minority school, the impacts on high-achieving students or non-minority students is, they're not adversely impacted.
Okay, well, I will try to dig up what I have found as the research that shows that actually for our high-income and our non-minority students in classrooms that are more diverse, their learning is actually improved if we do that right. That, and it, and it gets to our portrait of our graduate skills, all those sort of soft skills that we talk about, problem-solving, communicating, collaborating, that working with people who are different from you teaches you more. Your, and there, you know, there are reasons for it. You're forced to defend your ideas, you're forced to communicate more about what your ideas are. There's not this assumption that you're all in agreement. I mean, this is what the research I've read suggests. So the only reason I'm kind of pushing it a little bit is because when you look at this slide, we're gonna bring this out to the community. And we may say things like, "We wanna bus your kids further because we think that demographic mix is important." And I want to be sure that we're not sending a message that it's only good for the poor kids. It's also good for everybody's kid. So I wanna make sure that we're showing the research kind of on both sides of that, if, if it's there. So I'll see what I can find in what I've read, if that would help, okay.
Done, Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have Perchek, Evans, Corvus, Anderson, Strauss, K.K.G., and McLachlan. Anybody else on the list? Wilson? Mr. McLachlan, you wanna join? Okay, all right, then I'll go with Ms. Perchek first.
Thank you, and I, this is very helpful. And I do just have a couple of follow-up questions I may have to come back. I was formulating, but the first question is related to Ms. Hines because I do remember I'm trying to pu, pull up the research. Uh, the first headline, "How a Diverse School Can Make Your Child Smarter", and I think there are some articles, and maybe you alluded to those on, on the different research around it. I think there was one that looked at a specific school system. So if you're able to kind of, I'll try to share what I found, trying to figure out quickly what's, you know, the best research out there. And then my other brief question, in the slide where we discuss our legacy boundaries, not sure which slide that was. Um, there are a few factors listed on there. Sorry, I didn't write down the slide. Twelve. So, um, and I, and I assume we'll be getting deeper research analysis on some of this, hopefully. Um, and my first just question is I, I would like to know how our legacy boundaries are still a result of integration. Um, so what you mean by that? Um, if there are specific areas where you see that? Uh, I think the others are maybe a little more straightforward. But as we start to look, I know I have some, some boundaries from probably the sixties in my district. So if you can share more information on that and what you've seen in our school system where that's still a, a legacy issue, I would like to know.
Yeah, we, we can share some more detailed information. I'm gonna let Ms. Gillis go ahead and answer. But some of the information from, from years past regarding even developers that were going into certain areas and had made agreements and arrangements to have the boundary adjustment to a certain school, developed some of those attendance islands, we really don't have the specificity that we would like to have. A lot of it is historical context. There are some areas where we do have some information in greater detail. Ms. Gillis, is there anything else you want to add?
Yeah, so my team has started a project where we've taken all the boundaries from, um, I think the earliest we found were sixty-two, sixty-three, and we're digitizing all of those. You can see the change over time of the boundaries. And then we have some benchmarks of like what's happened as far as who initiated the boundary study, what's hap- We often get asked, what, how long has my neighborhood been in this school boundary? Um, how long have we been here? There's a long memory for our school boundaries in this community, which is nice, but not knowing, coming in fresh and not knowing the history of it or having someone else's history told to you. So we started to just look at, how can we demonstrate visually the boundary over time and what the changes have been and any kind of documentation that supports that? So we're looking to do an online mapping application so that everyone can see what the changes have been. So to go back to what you said about integration, so we had some schools that were close to each other in proximity that were historically black schools such as Luther Jackson. And the boundaries were changed to make sure that you had a mix of neighborhoods from one area to another. And so we had these like long bands over time, which historically would have been maybe more of like compacted around one school. Now we were taking a neighborhood from one side and putting it into a school on the other side. So you drive past one school to get to another one and back and forth. So that's what I'm referring to as the integration and the legacy boundary.
You'll be able, I guess my understanding is for all of these different legacies, including the integration legacy, to show visually maps for us in the public to be able to, to see.
Correct, that's the intent. But again, you're talking about historical artifacts. It's much like archaeological digging. And the artifacts that we're finding and the interpretations there have been trying to be as objective as, as our planning offices.
Is your goal that this will be available in March, or? No, okay.
That would be great.
It seems like, uh, no, so it's, this is an ongoing project?
It is. We're into the middle schools.
Okay.
That we've hired a couple of interns to help us with digitizing. So digitizing is when you take a paper map and you try to draw it on a screen. Then you have to look at the accuracy. So some of the descriptions of boundaries are follow difficult run for, you know, X and number feet, then take a left at such-and-such tree. It's like, well, we'll guess, but we're not quite sure.
That's a meter of bounds.
Well, I really appreciate this because I know I've had many conversations and not having, I think, that information gathered. I, I'm very excited to be able to see that something.
If I could just share on this, boundaries are a huge issue. Equity and excellence, both of those sound good. But part of this is transparency builds trust. We need to bring as much transparency to the boundaries that we currently have to be able to build the trust with the community, with board members, with all of you about the changes that we may or may not make in the boundary process. So this is great work that I think is long overdue and will really help the community maybe even better understand its own history that it may or may not know. We've had a lot of people move in Fairfax County since nineteen sixty-two. Um, not in every area, some area, I, I know, I know. Some areas, a lot of people have been in the same community since nineteen sixty-two. But trying to provide that balance and that transparency and that information, I think is going to be a huge win for you all as policymakers and for our community for transparency, building the trust that we need to go over these kind of issues.
Are you done, Ms. Perchek?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you know, exercising plurality of work session manager. Talked about, I think, is two, board members talked about research being there on the positive impact of a diversity on student achievement. And you also mentioned about counter-research on those points. If you could, you know, if you have those research available, could you share those with us? I mean, as an extra step, not, not tonight, okay, not tonight, but as an extra step, so that we don't have to do our research to it, right? Okay, with that, I have Ms. Evans next.
Thank you. I'm glad to follow Ms. Hines and Ms. Palchek. Um, thank you so much for providing this research. I think this, this is, we're finally starting a conversation that we really desperately need to have about how we are gonna fashion our boundaries and our programs. It's not all boundaries, it's, it's programs as well, to make sure that we do have equity in, in each of our schools and that, to make sure that we do have diversity. So this does give us a lot to think about. And down the road, I think we, we have to then translate this into what exactly is, is actionable. Um, I agree with both Ms. Hines and Ms. Palchek. I, I'm sure I've seen research that said that the, that diversity helps, helps all, all types of students. And I, um, there's the academic side, there's also the social and cultural side. Um, so whether the research has, has wrapped that, I'll be interested to see that. Um, as, as everyone on the board knows, I'm, I'm delighted to know that we're thinking about sleep when we talk about transportation and when we talk about boundaries. Um, and I can see that where we're, part of where we're headed here is we're gonna have some conflicting values here. I think a lot of people wanna be, they, they like their, particularly their elementary school to be next door so they can walk to it, so the parents can get to it. And there's a good, uh, there's a great value to that. At the same time, there are some neighborhoods and communities where you can't create a boundary that has socioeconomic diversity. So we're, we're gonna have to weigh those things. And we'll, we'll certainly have to weigh sleep. We have a ways to go, particularly with our middle schools, a, as far as that goes. So we, we don't wanna make that worse for our students. As far as the, the split feeders, you say it's mixed. And I, I would add that anecdotally, what I have heard about this is that it's mixed in part depending on the student. You've got students who really love to go all the way through with, with the same students, and you've got some who just love mixing it up, you know? And so I think that may be part of what, what the mixed results are there. Um, you know, there's a value to continuity, there's also a value to, uh, you know, new, new opportunities as, as well. So, um, as far as the equity goes, I, I think it's important to, to note as we do this that as long as we do have schools that are wealthy schools and as long as we have some schools that are high-poverty schools, that one factor we, we can't ignore is the fact that people can vote with their feet. And, um, so I, I do think that there's a value and a very high value to having, to having true diversity, true diversity of, of all types at, at all of our schools. And until we achieve that- And until we achieve that, we're we're going to have an issue. So my my only question, I guess I'm I'm out of time, I didn't realize I'd taken as much. But my only question really is 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 what what do we do next with this information? I think this is great information. What is your recommendation on how we take what you've given us and 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 create policy? What's our next step on that? Maybe that's a maybe that's a question for Dr. Braybrand.
Well, what we're looking at, if you go back to slide three. Can we go back to slide three? So tonight was the the review of the research and where FCPSA is current practice. What we want to do in March is really after the board has sort of reviewed this and soaked in on this. What are the goals that you want to see for the boundary policy? We showed you those factors. Some of the factors that the research talked about that were important are not in our current policy. Some of them are, some that are factors that are in our policy are not supported by the research. So what are the goals you want for boundary policy? And then based on those goals, we can look at trying to come up with some sort of prioritization, whether it's a ranking, whether it's a tiering, a weighting, right? I mean, going back to thinking about our formula discussions. Right now, we have all those factors listed, all sixteen factors. But we haven't weighted it, we haven't prioritized, we haven't tiered it. And
Are you hoping for an answer tonight?
Not tonight, March.
Oh, we're gonna talk about all this again in next month.
Well, we'd love your feedback. But in March, after you've looked at all this tonight and got your questions answered, then thank, talk with colleagues.
And then come back.
And then say, here are some goals, Dr. Braybrand. And here is where we even think factors can be prioritized. If we have the goals and we have prioritized factors, we can begin marking out for you. Well, based on this, here's the first set of boundaries that we would look at. Here's the next set. And we'd have transparency about why we began, where we began with those boundaries. And so that's that's the notion that we're bringing to you this evening.
Are you done, Ms. Evans? Okay, I have Ms. Corbin Sanders to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on this. I think this is probably the most important and hardest topic that we will have dealt with this calendar year because it is something that is a lot of different tentacles that are around boundaries. I have a couple of questions. On page ten of the, you have the health and safety. Right, okay, page ten shows length of time on buses. And I was wondering why you didn't have that as a linkage for health and safety from the standpoint of other health impacts of being on a bus. I had heard in the past that it has an impact on asthma and other sorts of breathing types of problems or challenges. Secondly, on page two of the report, which I thought was very good, I will be asking for access to a number of the articles here because your reference list is excellent. But on page two, on the paragraph under student diversity, I note that it says the placement of special programs has the potential to either increase or decrease diversity. And immediately above that, you talk about gifted programs tend to favor white, high income students while special education programs disproportionately serve more minority and low income students. I think it would be very helpful for this board to have a map that showed where the placement of some of these special ed specialized programs, because they have been concentrated in areas that have, in my impression, a higher level of low SES. If I could have as a next step, that location of those specialized programs. Yes?
Yes, Ms. Corbin Sanders, just just for referencing and maybe for everyone, but also our staff. You're referencing the research on the boundary decision making when you said page two?
Yes.
Okay.
And then for clarification, you're asking for where ours are, like the Burke Center where?
Like a heat map is where you take a look at where Bryant, Quander, Bulleye, I can keep going.
And for clarification, was that for only special education or are you looking at advanced academic as well?
Well, what this says is that it disproportionately serves more minority and low income students for the specialized programs. But if you would like to give us a heat map of both, that'd be helpful. And then on page, regarding page ten, if you had ever done any research as to the asthmatic impacts and things like that of bus rides, because what concerned me is I look at special ed, those are the longest times on buses. And it might be because they're concentrated in certain areas.
Correct, there, I mean, we have approximately five hundred and four special needs students with bus rides ranging from forty five to fifty nine minutes. For example, West Potomac High School, we have students that may be attending the Kilmer Center. So therefore, the time associated with that because of where the center is located, so. Yeah, we can provide.
Those numbers also include if we have a multi-agency services, like for example, if there's a center in Rockville and we're transporting students to Rockville, Maryland, those numbers, those times and those bus routes will be included in that total.
Can we go ahead and put an asterisk on this chart then and explain that there and give the percentage or the numbers that are having those longer bus rides based on?
The number of routes that are multi-agency or perhaps out of district?
Out of district.
We can break it down.
Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Hold on, I need two hints. Okay, great, I know. Thank you very much, excellent research, and I look forward to making more progress with this. I do believe, because I think it's Mr. Moon and I are the only ones that have done major boundary studies.
Oh, I was there.
Yes, I know. And they are not to be, they, you don't have to be afraid of them, it actually can get done. And and a lot of the things that we've already put out there as important things to consider. Certainly overcrowding, geographic proximity, mixture of housing type, which is really what you look at for the proxy for economic diversification as much as possible. And all of those things, it is possible to include them all and actually come up with something that is reasonable. I have found that when you're doing a difficult boundary study, you can get between about eighty to eighty five percent of the community agreement on a lot of using these principles and being very transparent. It's very hard to get a hundred percent, but you do the very best that you can. And then sometimes it's the special programs that that that's how Bailey's came to be. When you just, you you can't push any harder. Ms. Corbin Sanders is talking about AAP centers as being tending to attract more Caucasian students. On my end of the county, it's it's more of our Asian, our students from India, Pakistan, the Middle East, China, South Korea, it's not white students. And that's what I was going to say with the language, yes, because I can see that. And it also is my experience on my end of the county, it has nothing to do with socioeconomic status. So that is a different piece that does not necessarily correspond with the research. But that's why our research that we do, I think, is very important. I also think in going forward with it, where the board of supervisors have provided mixed types of housing within the redevelopment, where you've got single family townhouse and apartments within close proximity, it gives us a running start at some economic diversity. I also think at the middle and high school level is where we have the greatest opportunity for for assembling a a boundary situation that really brings us the best diverse population. Because there's just, it's a wider geographic area. And so we have an opportunity to actually be able to incorporate all of our pieces. The other thing that we have not put in there, what we did years ago, is when we do a difficult boundary study, that our projections are important so that we hope that that boundary will hold. For I know in our our policy, we've said three years, but ten to fifteen years, if at all possible, is much more comfortable for a community. So it's being very, very smart and understanding our projections. So, thank you.
And a comment on? Anyone?
No, I mean, they're excellent points, you know. You know, also the grandfathering, you know, we didn't mention the grandfathering as well. So and the Fairfaxing, the One Fairfax, as opposed to the national research, those are all good points that we need to take into consideration.
Yeah, before I go to Keanu Kishkamara, I remember those days when he had those major boundary changes, easily drawing a couple of thousand community members in the in the in the gymnasium. So.
Well, thank you. I I have to say, being, I guess, the the one that's been here the least amount of time, this is the issue that produces the most angst in the community. And so I'm glad to see that we're going through, taking the time to go through the research and take a comprehensive approach. I do think that's the appropriate, especially when we've committed to One Fairfax. And, you know, I think that it will help us to have a greater degree of balance. I I do want to ask a question, it's somewhat related to this, but I've received a number of letters, Dr. Braybrand, about actually the McLean area saying that they had a meeting and that staff members were there and that there had been some decisions made with respect to how, and and I know how community members could say one thing and you didn't actually say that. But I do want to make sure that we talk about that because I, it's my understanding that this is the process by which we're dealing with this, these changes. Wait, let me finish because I want to get my three minutes. And I and I also want to make sure that we have attached to this and available to the public because people have been writing me about the letter, I believe you put it in the Braybrand brand letter, Dr. Braybrand, about the moratorium on limited boundary changes. I'd also like to see, I know we've talked about the sleep. I'd like to see that as a significant consideration. I know we're not setting up priorities right now, but I don't know how that would change the focus at all. With, we talked about the attendance islands. I I think, Ms. Corbin Sanders, you asked that those be identified or no? If not, I want them identified, okay, as the next step. And then I was also concerned about the sped. Let me get to that. On the bottom of page ten, where it says it's more than forty five, forty five to fifty nine minutes, four hundred and two, yeah, right there under those two, what what does that include? If we can identify those? Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And I think those are my questions for now. Thank you.
I can get you what we shared. I've gone back and looked. I don't know that I, I know I responded to members of the community and CC'd some school board members about pausing to make sure that we look through boundaries through a One Fairfax lens. I don't think I put that full explanation in a Braybrand briefing. I may have made just a brief reference to it. So just to be honest, I'll double check one more time and I'll share with the board what I did share with the community for full transparency so that there's no confusion there. As far as the McLean meeting, there there was a recent meeting, I think, with the facilities and and the board, and I wasn't added.
McLean PTSA sponsored meeting and myself, Dr. Zulaga and Kevin, we were there and we presented information from the CIP.
I'm not saying that this was said there, but the letters that I'm receiving are saying that they were basically, they're expecting to get this boundary changed and that it's just a matter of time and they want to know why the board is dragging their feet. And so I think that we need to have some statement from, you know, a more official capacity because I don't want to say something different than what's been said in the community. I didn't, I, I've dealt with enough cases where people tell me things that are not necessarily how it was communicated, but I've received it enough that I think that we need to clarify.
We can work on working with staff to come up with something we can share with the community. My my own, my own, my own view of it right now is I want to work with the board and get the goals and the prioritization clear from this board before making boundary decisions. And I get there's a tension, there's a tension probably in that pyramid, there's a tension perhaps in the West Springfield pyramid. But I think we need to build this transparency and as long, this is my first time being superintendent in Fairfax. I know there's a few that have had the years before in boundaries. It has been more divisive from my experience than I think it needs to be. And I want to know that I, as a superintendent, have built transparency with the school board and the community upfront. So I don't mind working on putting out something to sort of say, we need, I'd like to continue to go through the board with this process. And then based on that set of prioritized factors or goals, whatever those may be. They could decide, you could decide as a board to change nothing from how we we do it. But but when that's done, then we can begin going through the boundary decisions to include that pyramid as well.
I I think that's really important and that's what I'm talking about. But I also think that these folks that are writing me, and it's, I'm getting more letters every day, need to know that that's where we are and it's not a matter of any one board member or a group of board members dragging their feet.
Okay, I'll work on some communication that I can get out around that, then follow up shortly.
Actually, can I suggest, because facility is going to do some modifications to assist with the overcrowding until the board acts. And I think that, Dr. Braybrand, that may be something that you and Mr. Pottenberg may want to include.
So, yeah, I've received even a recent inquiry from the the principal of that high school as to how the interim measures are going to be taken. So this is the struggle. At what point do you do you have a hard stop while you evaluate the policy and moving forward? Or do you make adjustments that you may say that might be in conflict and therefore will have to come back and make different adjustments? It is a challenge. In the meantime, the, you know, I always say at the beginning of the school year, the students are going to show up. So we have to address that. And in the case of the conversation that we're having is we're putting a modular at that facility, which will not accommodate all of the overcrowding that they have. We do have other areas where we have significant needs. Our natural process, then the legacy process of the CIP was such that we put it in on page forty three or whatever it was, it'd be down in the prior years and then come forward in the up years. I know we had some in the Braddock District for some time that had worked their way through in many years of conversations to where they had gotten to that point. As a part of this conversation, this body may determine that it is too vast to make any changes or it's too vast that we need to make changes in the interim and we need to do it with this understanding, with this transparency. I think those conversations will be healthy out of this. And I I certainly will support Dr. Braybrand in trying to put together anything or anything that has been gone out before.
Okay.
One one last thing, Ms. Kishkamara, you saw our timeline, we're not talking six months from now coming back to you. We're coming, we're talking next month, March to do goals and prioritization. So I think we can get a framework, I'd like to have a framework in place before the school year ends so we can begin to make boundary decisions that may not be ready for this fall, but they certainly could impact the twenty twenty one school year.
I I I just really appreciate the opportunity to discuss this as as the full board. I know I've coming on, you know, coming on, I've heard the history of how we've done things in a more limited manner. And I think that this is the right approach, so I wanted to state that publicly.
For the members, we're not, you know, we're not discussing a particular boundary adjustment tonight. We are looking at the research and the factors, let's focus on those, okay? With that in mind, I have a Mrs. Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mr. Worson.
Thank you. So I was reading again what's on our agenda, which it says to present existing research to guide the board and set goals for boundary policy. So I I just heard Dr. Braybrand say that we'll do that next month instead. And if that's the case, that's good because I can tell you right now, while I appreciate the data gathering that's been presented to us, I feel like that's where we still are. And so first of all, I want to say thank you to everybody involved. I have no doubt that everybody's come at this work with the best intentions and your goals of helping the board. So I'm only going to direct my comments at Dr. Braybrand because he's the one that, you know, we end up directing. So I would just say that I'm a little concerned because if we're going to come at this next month with what I see here, I don't, I don't feel like I've gotten the analysis from you and the administration. This is kind of a lot of good information, but especially if we're trying to remove the politics of it, we're going to need you and your team to do the next harder level, which is now that you've gathered a lot of information. which is now that you've gathered a lot of information from even other school divisions, it's listed here, but there isn't the analysis that says when we look at these large school divisions similar to us, what, what can we actually say reflects a best practice versus we could be not necessarily so surprised that across the United States, people haven't been doing a best practice and so Fairfax County is going to have to lead on that for itself and, and hopefully to help others. So I do hope that when we come back to this, that there can be a little bit of that crosswalking of, because there really is a lot of information to data mine on this, but, um, I, as a board member, certainly will look to you and your team of experts to say to us as yours, yes, you can set the goals, but we can't set the goals if we don't know what the analysis is telling us. So I, I think we just need a little bit more of that. Um, but I feel like what is here is going to be helpful. Um, I did happen to notice that in the report itself, there was about three pages of narrative, but then there were four solid pages of, um, references to the research and, and so I guess I would just say, and everybody's different, I, I probably would like to have had a little bit more of the information that came. Because that's a, I mean, four pages of citations, that's a lot of research that clearly was reviewed. But I would say for me as a board member, what, what was in the, the three pages of document, narrative wouldn't necessarily give me the comfort level to start setting goals. So, um, uh, that, that to me, to my colleagues, I would just say, we're going to have a profound responsibility on us. Um, this is something that the community hasn't done in a long time. And shoot, I just ran out of time, so I guess I need my go back.
I'll put you on go back. Anybody want to respond to, uh?
The one thing I would like to say, and, and I'll defer to Mr. Smith, but, um, the one overarching in all of the, uh, elements that we provided was capacity. So the best practice is capacity. Beyond that, everything else was unique to, like we talked about Fairfax, was unique to the culture of the community and the board and their communities and the influences. So, but the one overriding one was capacity.
And, and if you look at the overarching or the overriding being capacity and, uh, page seventeen of the present, or slide seventeen shows that, uh, the, the areas where we would like to help the board have a better understanding is really that capacity is that primary overarching. And then that focus on socioeconomic diversity, uh, in our schools, uh, as well as, you know, thinking about travel times. But hopefully with the information that we provided about our current practice in Fairfax, uh, and if you look at the maps, you can notice the colors in the maps and that gives you a sense of, uh, some of the issues that are before us. You can also see the shapes of some of the boundaries. You can see the islands that are there. And so w- we were hoping to provide more information for you to consider as we think about, uh, that next meeting, really looking at capacity being the overriding factor, uh, with again, the socioeconomic diversity and thinking about travel times. And for us in Fairfax, you know, the travel times is really impacted by, uh, the shape of our boundaries uh, and, uh, the islands that we have created in the past for a variety of reasons.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Um, I'm going to follow up, I think, on Mrs. McLaughlin a little bit. Um, I, just to reiterate her comment, I think that understanding, um, other approaches that are being used in other systems, it sounds like maybe the main criteria is capacity. Um, but is, if there is, um, examples that in whole or in part we could emulate, that would be useful uh, to know about. Uh, I think we've got some references to research, but maybe some exempl, exemplars. Um, but for Dr. Bray Bran, I think the one question I start with is to identify the goals, then, uh, I think we need to understand, um, what are the issues that you see that aren't being addressed in the current policy? And I, I'd like to just hear you talk about that.
Okay. I don't think we've had a transparent boundary process when we did minor adjustments. I think individual board members met with the superintendent and decisions were made that other communities asked questions about and certain board members didn't even know or could explain and have since asked me to defend something that, um, again, these are past decisions that are made. But boundaries, in my belief, need to be made with at least a review by the full board before they're done. Um, there was a time here thinking that we needed to move things through and we didn't have time for the board. Perhaps, I, 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 actually, I wasn't here, so I don't know the exact reason. And maybe we can delve into that a little bit more, but it was decided to expedite things to have one or two magisterial districts and a board member make a decision. I don't think that is best for this board or for my leadership style and for a One Fairfax that talks about building equity in. I don't think equity was the leading factor in the decisions made based on some of those boundaries. Um, you, you asked me, so I'm just telling you. Um, so what I do think, um, what I do think is great is there's real transparency. Maybe we didn't just bluntly say it, but eight of the factors in blue, we have sixteen factors, eight of them, uh, that were blue, that were supported by the academic research were listed on the PowerPoint. Wow. So academic research says those factors are important. The other, we have eight others that are not in the research. And, and maybe they don't go away, but i- if you thought about ranking or tiering, you could say, well, those are, those have been historic factors for Fairfax, but we may want to put them in the proper order of what we think is most important. I think that still helps us and I think it still helps the community. And, and Tom, this is my belief, having been here starting as an intern twenty-five years ago. When every factor is equally weighted, the factor that's going to matter most is the political power or the political access and opportunity gaps for com- communities to influence the board. And in the end, the communities that have had the greatest access have, I think, most, most powerfully impacted the boundaries. The other reality, and they've already said it, is some boundaries were done in nineteen sixty-two where a whole different set of factors were in play when those boundaries were done. And I think we need to be willing in a very deliberate process, as some other board members have said, with full transparency, using the research to get us to a better place. Our boundaries can be better. The boundary process can be better than what we currently have. I do think one of the things you said and Ms. McLaughlin did too, can we pull a little bit more clearly some of the exemplars? I think we can. There is no one school district. There is variability across districts. So that's one of the, the tough things, but we can pull, um, even more clearly, I think, the things that we think really resonated for us and, um, we'll be glad to do that. And hopefully, Tom, I don't know, did I answer all of your questions?
You, well, that, I appreciate that answer. I, I was intentionally wanting you to draw you out a little bit so that I could understand.
Okay.
Your perspective a little better, but, um, let's see, I'm, I've used up the three minutes, so I don't know. I guess I need to go back.
And I would just re, I would just reiterate that those big three are capacity, socioeconomic diversity and travel times. And then as we think about how that has an impact here in Fairfax, it relates to the current space that we have, as you can see on the maps. Uh, you can think about the socioeconomic diversity that we have in the system and the travel times as it relates to the shape of our islands and the distances that students travel for a variety of reasons, and much of that is driven by programs as well.
One other thing, just to, it's stirring it up and I like stirring it up. So something Ms. Evans said that I think is very perceptive. Uh, all of you made perceptive comments, but a perceptive comment she made, it is not just possible. Among the big three even that we identified, there is some inherent tension. Travel time may have an inherent tension in some communities with socioeconomic diversity because you can't going out just say one standard deviation isn't going to change the socioeconomic composition of the school. So that'll be a balancing, in some cases. In some communities, it could be. In some communities, it may be further. And so, um, that's part of the nuance as we get further in, how to balance among the factors. But again, I think sixteen factors and no, no prioritization has created it too. Um, just not clear enough, the community to the community, not clear enough why we decided what we decided. Um, and the fact, as I said before, that not all board members were involved in decisions that frankly ultimately end up playing out later when a community goes, well, you did this over here, why wouldn't you do it over here? Um, so, thank you.
Okay, uh, if Mr. McElvin doesn't want to speak, but then, then I will, I will do before I do go backs. I have a Pearl Chick, McLaughlin, Karen Kiskamara, Evans, Karen Corbin Sanders, Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Strauss on my go back list. Am I, am I missing anyone? Okay. Uh, a little, a little bit of historical background. I don't, I don't know, besides Janie, who else were there at the time? The board, well, the boards long ago discussed, last time they discussed the boundary policy with those sixteen factors that board really wrestled in prioritization of those factors and just could not come to a consensus. Could not come to a consensus. So they decided, I, I guess that's a consensus. Consensus was to put them all in the parlance and we'll see how those factors going to work out. We'll see whether next month we'll do better than that, uh, hopefully, but let's wait and see. Uh, you know, initially what the staff wanted to get out of this, uh, tonight's work session was not only presenting to, presenting the research and also our, our practices to us, but also start talking about goals, about as I was appointed to the, uh, meeting manager for this person, you know, this work session that as I was being briefed that oh, you, you know, that might be a little too soon for us to handle at this point. So I'm glad that staff agreed uh, with me, uh, to not do that until at least the March timeframe. And also, even though I see that staff putting a capacity and a couple other factors maybe as, uh, probably, uh, more important goals for us to, you know, for us to keep, keep in mind. But, uh, you know, Dr. Bray Bran and Mr. Plattenburgs wanted to hear from us, you know, what we have, uh, thinking about some of these factors and what you have on our minds before. So, you know, by next work session, who knows, you know, Dr. Bray Bran and staff may come up with some other things for us to ponder as we try to, uh, set our goals and prioritize our factors. You know, the, the fact that we have those, you know, those, you know, setting goals and prioritization of our factors is March discussion topics does not mean that we'll make a decision on those. We have to make a decision on those in March either. We'll go see. With that, I'm going to go to the go back list. Pearl Chick?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions following, um, what was discussed already. I guess I'll start with the small, small ones. Um, the first one, uh, on the bus times slide. I'm sorry, once again, I didn't write numbers today. Um, thank you. I, uh, slide, oh, I had it, slide ten. Uh, and I, I know my colleagues asked several important questions and I'd like to hear more, um, especially around special ed. I don't know if it was asked to also get a breakdown on, um, age or, you know, pre-K versus K versus, you know, I think I've heard, uh, and, and a lot, a big concern around our younger students and how long they're on these longer bus rides. I think high schools may be a little bit slightly less critical than, um, some of our younger kids being on those bus rides. So for, I don't know if there's too little data to do that. Yeah. Um, the other question, thank you, is on the maps that you're using for the overcrowding in slides fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Um, I guess as we look for the future, I know some of the questions we've had around the CIP this year is, right, our current, um, numbers shown here, uh, look very different when we look at the CIP's projections for the, for the next five years. And so I guess if you feel that the projected ones, um, are accurate based on the internal planning studies that I know you're doing, um, a- and if, if so, or if not, kind of your, uh, your information or your best judgment on that and why you think that. Um, I'll try to keep going. Um, and on the last slide, I appreciate that we have the, um, as you said on slide seventeen, the three best research guidance for boundary adjustments. And then, and reading and, and I, I may have missed this in the full report. I guess my question, and I think what some of us are trying to get to is how did you come to those three conclusions? In the conclusion paragraph, I don't specifically see, um, just those three listed and why they were recommended. So I know you've had the privilege of having that conversation, seeing the research and coming to those three conclusions. I think as a board, we haven't been able to go through that process with you. And so whether that's, you know, additional narrative explanation of how those three specific ones uh, and which other ones you looked at, because I think there were additional ones mentioned in the research and in the conclusion and why those were decided to be the top three, just to help us have that conversation. I'm sorry, I have two more. Um, one is, uh, mixed housing type. I just want to state, um, the Planning Commission Schools Committee is recommending that be included, um, because there is the county and the development factor in all of this of encouraging mixed types, mixed income development so that it, we do not continue to see this impact and, and vice versa. I know this is something we can't put here, but we know as we go through this process, uh, even those who don't have kids in schools, the reality is that these boundaries, uh, impact their home values, where they, how they make decisions, how people make decisions. So I know that's kind of an elephant in the room we don't talk about that's not in, within our control here, um, but that, that as a community decision, um, has a, a major impact and influence. And then, um, finally, um, I just want to make sure, I appreciate that we're doing this quickly. I just, I guess I want to make sure that we have time to process, to receive feedback, to be transparent with the community, um, as to how these factors, like to take it into account and, and, and maybe a plan of how we, what our timeline and what our, um, communication process will be, external community, community process. Thank you.
Just thank you. We'll follow up.
Okay, I have a Mr. McElvin.
Yes, just very briefly. Um, so we, we have this, um, brief truncated timeline in front of us, uh, but I do want to have a, take a minute just to address the, the longer term timeline uh, because I think it has effects on our discussion next month. Uh, I do not understand why this board would make determination on factors that would, um, then, um, I guess, hold, hold, hold to account the following board, um, for those decisions. Um, when you're going to have a massive turnover on this board and they may have, uh, diff- differing beliefs on, um, priorities. Um, so whether we're going to plow through with it or if we're make one decision now as this board and then leave the hard work to the next board. Uh, what is the reasoning for the timing?
My most transparent, honest answer is One Fairfax happened and I'm superintendent and I don't believe we've had a One Fairfax lens for the boundary process. That's the simplest answer I can give. It's a big issue and I think it is about how, it's a question I need to wrestle with, but I'd say the board does about how to take something this big and do the One Fairfax process with it. But I wasn't comfortable continuing to go forward with business as usual and feel that I could say to members of the community that I was looking at One Fairfax to help guide me and that was just a broad policy, but it was a policy around equity. And I think, um, I, I think we've got to do that. I think we've got to do that work before we do more boundary decisions because I don't know that everybody looking backwards would say every boundary decision that's been made has been done with one with a lens of equity in mind.
I agree with that. I'm looking at this through the lens of a future board member, um, who might feel boxed in by the decisions that we make on this. I fully agree that we need to move forward on, um, on this process post haste, but, um, I think the timing is a bit screwy, um, on, on multiple levels. Um, so I think as a board, that's something we have to think about and I don't think we've thought about it. Thanks.
I have a Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Karen Kiskamara.
So just because I'm following Mr. McElvin, uh, I'll speak to that first. Um, I really appreciate what Ryan's bringing up. Um, I really appreciate what Ryan's bringing up and I think it is something that we should all reflect on as we continue the dialogue. The one thought I had though in the seven years I've been on this board is we have had such transition in this school division with leadership. I mean, I've served seven years and I've had three, technically four superintendents. When you count Steve Lockard, who has served almost entire year as our interim. It is really hard for the division to continue to get its work done when we have found ourselves with such transition. And so the other hand, I would also add that this is probably gonna be the most senior experienced board we're gonna have in quite some time. And I remember when I came onto the board and I certainly in my first year wouldn't necessarily felt that I had the scope and understanding of the system to then tackle something that is so profound as boundaries. So what I do hope, Mr. McLaughlin, is that we lay the foundation for whoever serves on this next board, that we came at this with a best practice and research mindset and the new board absolutely could come in and perhaps perfect, uh, what we're setting in motion. But what I do worry is when you bring on a board that could be more than half new members, by the time they get to know the system, get up to speed, I think it might be more challenging for them to tackle something that's, that's this, um, complex. And so that would be my only thing and I don't want us to lose ground. And as Mr. Plattenburg has shared, um, I've had some boundary issues in my district that should have been fixed by my predecessor, not necessarily through who are faulted alone. It just was not something they could ever get to. And I've now been here for seven years and we still haven't been able to get to it. So I, I do think we need to, to work on this as, as best as we can, never rushing at it. I wanna do my go back, emphasize first of all, I'm thrilled to hear that the tipping point study, the twenty thirteen tipping point study will be updated. I would just strongly encourage staff working on it that do not feel that you have to just, uh, polish it up. Um, I, you know, that, I think the study was good and then the thing that we took from it was the fact that um, poverty is your biggest factor when you're talking about a tipping point for school success. And so I, I just, but I wanna make sure that it, you believe it's informative and can give us the best information possible. And Dr. Brabran, I wanna echo what you said about transparency. I think that is key for community trust. And finally, I'll just share that I personally experienced a boundary change when I was heading into the fifth grade. And I went from an elementary school where I had been there, developed roots as a kindergartner, and suddenly in fifth and sixth grade, I was in a brand new elementary school. And don't let anybody tell you it doesn't affect kids. It was a really difficult two years for me, my sisters, my friends who we were pulled out of, a very tiny cohort. And it stuck with me to this day, I remember what that experience was. So, um, I don't know how we'll capture this in the research, but psychologically, how that affects kids is real. And if the research hasn't been done on it, then that's a, a, a limitation in the research. But you, we could bring in any psych, psychology expert who will tell us, don't ever underestimate what it does when you change boundaries. So that's gotta be something we're just mindful of.
Anybody wanna respond to that?
No, thank you, we'll follow up with any questions that were related.
Karen Kizkamara.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I, I too wanna go, I wanna, well, I wanna respond to Dr. Brabran. First of all, I appreciate your candidness because I will say, I know I'm not the only person who travels across the county. Um, but on these issues, I think we have a credibility issue. And that there are people who, there is perceived unfairness and that's the importance of this process. And that's, that was the basis of a lot of my comments, uh, earlier. And so that is the reason that I am grateful for your comments, Dr. Brabran, because we do have to tackle this as a board. These are not easy decisions, um, but at least the community can see and have an opportunity to participate in the process and feel that they understand what the drivers are. And I think that that's really critical. I too am concerned about how quick the turnaround is. I will say as one board member, I would prefer to get it right than to get it fast. So that's where my priority, um, would be. I know that these are hard decisions and so I don't know, I think somebody mentioned using the third party. I wouldn't, you know, I don't know if that's something we want. Okay, um, so I, I think that was, that was the main thing that I wanted to, to point out, so thank you.
Anybody care to respond?
I agree. Okay, the reason why I had mentioned originally to F-PAC, a lot of their ideas are collaborative. Um, the conversation about a third party is, as every one of you have mentioned in one way, shape or form another, including Mr. McLaughlin, including Ms. Evans, when we start talking about, and, and Dr. Kizkamara, when we start talking about the, um, sleep program, that was twelve years and then nine years. And then, and then this body was the one that was able to, to get that across the finish line. Those courageous conversations take the time to make sure that there is the community outreach piece, there's the informing piece. It is a process, um, and, and therefore the recommendation of, of something that would be broad. If, if we get some guiding principles, if we get the pillars of what to look at, if we get some focus in those areas, then we can begin that conversation as about how would be the best way forward. And it may be that it is something that is short term, near term versus long term. Dr. Brabran, I think you wanted to say something.
Well, you know, we're, I'm, I've already been, as Tom said, drawn out, so I'm just gonna say it this way. I don't think it all is gonna get wrapped up next month. But what I do think, if we could get the goals and priorities, right? Get, get it close. If you feel there's some community engagement and feedback that needs to happen, we can do that over a couple of months. But honestly, before this board leaves, honest, I'd love it in place so that we can begin a decision-making process based on it, that you all will have made the decision of the factors to prioritize, to have gotten the community engagement perhaps prior to your final decision that these are the factors. And then to move forward with both the community and the board understanding what those priorities are gonna be. And then the next board can be really involved in making the decisions based on those factors. And enough of you will have been here and there will have been a transparent process that the community and the board felt they were aware of. I mean, if you're honest just asking me, and your timeline may be sooner because there's some community pressures to make decisions quicker from some board members or a little bit longer. But I'd love this board to have finished the framework by the end of this calendar year so that we can begin at the end of this calendar year or the beginning of, of twenty twenty to start making decisions for boundaries for future school years. That's kinda worrying. Marty, you wanna add or you can maybe better amplify what I may have missed?
No, I think you, you said it, you said it great. And I think that the board can also consider that we don't necessarily have to prioritize all sixteen. So, because that's, that's a heavy lift when you think about having to go through a process to prioritize all sixteen. The board may want to prioritize, these are our top three or four as we think about a boundary process. And that we can consider other pieces that are currently part of our guiding practice. But as we go into a guy, a boundary process, the board should consider X, Y and Z first as we think about what those individual impacts would be for schools and communities. So that's something that the board can consider as we think about the lift, the time involved. Because again, having to look at all of those, those factors and having to have rules that say, well, if this first, then this, then X, Y or Z. If we have at least three or four to get us started, then board members could consider other factors.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Evans, but I mean, I'm gonna welcome you to a March discussion when we actually talk about prioritization of factors. How difficult it is. Just wait. Ms. Evans.
Uh, thank you, uh, just on the, the, uh, one thing that I would like to see if possible. On the, uh, maps that we have on pages, uh, I think it is fourteen to sixteen, the heat maps. That's what they're called, uh, the ones with the, yeah. One of our goals is to, of course, remove as many trailers as we can, but we also would love to see the, the modulators taken out and we know that it makes a difference, um, in terms of what capacity looks like. And, and you have, uh, thank you for calculating what capacity is without the modulators. I, I would like as a next step to see these maps, uh, with, uh, what they would look like with the modulators taken out. So I will, will propose that as a next step. On an overarching issue, I would say that, uh, I'm, I'm glad for this discussion because I do think that it is important. We have to establish the values and then we have to stick to them, you know, or whatever board has to stick to them. As far as the conclusions that we had on page, or on page seventeen of this, the three, um, if you would go to, uh, page, yes, uh, seventeen. Um, my first instinct is that these three really are the top three. Um, I could probably be persuaded otherwise, but I, you know, I, I'm looking at your conclusions and, um, and, and I believe I'm, I'm gonna end up agreeing with all three of those, those all three are, are very, the most important as opposed to some of the lesser things, you know, political boundaries and, um, attendance islands and split feeders. I know that they all, um, play a role, but I would say that, that capacity, socioeconomics and travel time, you know, distance to and from probably are, are the, the big three. So, um, at least for now, I'm gonna agree with you, I'll just make that part of my input now. Um, but back to the, the, the values and the transparency. Um, I did go through two major boundary studies during my time on the board. And, um, a- as far as the, this, the, the one, I mean, part of it to my mind was, um, I, I simply disagreed with the decision of the board. It wasn't a matter of transparency, I just believed that the board just didn't make the right decision in terms of socioeconomics. And we were aware at the, the time, we had plenty of warning and we fought long and hard and thank you, Mr. Moon and, um, Mrs. Strauss for agreeing with those of us who said we should not change, you know, we should not be removing, you know, changing the socioeconomics, um, of that school and you know what I'm talking about. So I, I think it's not just a matter of transparency because we, we spent a lot of time talking about that and at the end, uh, the board made the decision that it made. So that's where I'm going back with saying, we have to be strategic, we have to be deliberative, we have to establish our priorities and our values and then the board has to stick to it. So, um, and just in conclusion, I, I do think it's, that this board should, um, by the, the end of our term, December thirty first, uh, that, that we should have determined this because we've been together now and, you know, we've, we're having a thoughtful conversation on it. And then hopefully set up the next board, um, to take action, you know, specific action.
Anybody wants to comment on that? If not, I'll go to Karen Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, and I'm glad to follow Ms. Evans because I, um, agree with her that we really do need to, uh, fulfill the promise of this board of, uh, of a focus on equity and excellence and one Fairfax demands is looking at our, um, policies. Having said that, I do have some concerns when we talk about sixteen possible criteria. When you look at page, uh, six, then you want, you see that there are really eight and that there are eight that are not supported. So five has the eight that are supported by educational research and, uh, six has a number that aren't. And one of those is the contiguous boundaries, um, adjacent boundaries. And for too long, we've looked at adjacent boundaries as being the only solution and we then reinforced and actually contributed to, um, clustering our, um, poverty into certain schools and actually bussing poverty into, more poverty into those schools. And so I think that we have to be very careful in, uh, making sure that we look at the criteria that were on the last page of the, or second to last page. Uh, additionally, I worry when we hear, hear language like, we have to worry about home values and, uh, boundaries because it's precisely that, that reinforced that some home values were less important than other home values and that is not consistent with one Fairfax. So I think we have to be very focused on ensuring that we look at our boundary policy with one Fairfax in mind and with a, um, focus that it's about student success and that if we focus on student success, we will achieve school success. And if we focus on, um, student success, we will have a focus on what is, on fulfilling the FCPS promise that was available to some of us when we first, uh, when we went through these schools and having a consistent delivery, no matter where you are in the county, to, that you will achieve the same level of academic rigor. But to do that, we also have to ensure that we have that balance in how we approach our, um, boundaries. So I would just, um, hope that this board would stay focused on that. I would like to look at the maps from the standpoint of, um, capacity when you take the pupil placements out because i- in one particular school, there were over a hundred and ten students that moved out of one boundary and, and were pupil placed into an adjacent one. And then all of a sudden, that school this year looks like it's in the light blue when last year they were amongst the, uh, you know, right, moving up into close to ninety. And so we do need to be careful when we look at our boundaries and, um, any adjustments we make that we do, um, pull out the pupil placements and have a fairer look at them, uh, at our boundary policy. And then also we want to, before we embark on this, we need to keep focusing on if we're gonna put pre-K in our elementary schools, then we have to look at this as well.
It is, one wants to comment?
Nope, I agree, we'll follow up. Um, pupil placement includes everything like immersion, AAP, special education. We break that out in terms of category in the, um, the membership trends analysis report that we provided, but we could provide some more detail about what you exactly asked for.
Yeah. If, if the board is interested, we can look at our student transfer reg and have an eye to that as we go through this boundary process. We move a lot of kids through student transfer. But we haven't specifically brought student transfer to the board this evening. But that is something if board members want to see or review of that as we continue to look through the boundary policy, we can certainly consider that if board members are interested.
And that does tie to program placement most specifically. So as we've talked about, program placement being another factor that drives a lot of this work, it, it's really considering where we place programs, why we place programs uh, and, uh, you know, being more equitable as we think about where programs, uh, should go in schools.
Okay, uh, I have a Mr. Wilson to be followed by Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Hines. Uh, by the way, ideally I would like to be done by eight forty-five so that we could have fifteen minutes for the next steps and to be done by nine o'clock altogether.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Moon. Just to touch back on the topic of the timing of this, I have to say that I, I think I come down on Ms. Evans' side on the timing. It, it is, it is bothersome, uh, Dr. Brabran, that you mentioned that there's a lack of transparency. And even more significantly, a sense that maybe it's political power of communities that are having the greatest impact and not criteria that the board has incorporated in the policy. And frankly, you know, this board, uh, you know, in conjunction with, uh, the board supervisors, has a one Fairfax policy. So if, if, if the current policy doesn't reflect one Fairfax, I don't think there's any reason, really frankly, for delaying at all. I think we do need to move forward and have these conversations, as difficult as they may be. Um, I think that's, you know, if we're, if we're going to fulfill the commitment that was made by the board, the only way we can do that is to have the conversation. So I, I guess I'm in favor of, of not just kicking the can down the road, uh, so that a future board can deal with it. I mean, we're, we're here, we've got another ten months, so let's, let's try to use that time wisely. I think I do wanna echo, uh, what Ms. Palchek said. I don't, I don't agree, uh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, that this is about preferencing one owner's home value over another. I don't think that's what we're doing when, I don't think that's what she's talking about when she mentions homeowners. So that I would say that, you know, I think really, um, we do, uh, represent both homeowners who have kids in school and all the other homeowners, uh, frankly, in our district who, who vote for us or, or are our constituents. And so I, I think that, you know, that it is part of the conversation and I think that maybe one of the things, factors we should consider is sort of a preference to protect uh, boundaries for the benefit of homeowners. How much we weight that, I think is a part of our discussion, but I do think that Uh, how much we weight that, I think is a part of our discussion, but I do think that it's un- I think we, we, I think she mentioned it is the elephant in the room. I think that's probably right. I think, but I think we ought to go ahead and let that topic be part of our conversations. And that's another one of those tough points of discussion. Um, okay, just, I got a couple of requests. I think with the dra- the travel times, I'd like to see the travel times, um, also sort of more broken out for us, perhaps showing by schools, so we could see where are the, particularly the gened population, where do they have the longest commutes, where they have short commutes so that we can see, because I think that is an impact move on sleep and on, on the parents, uh, uh, management of their mornings and getting kids up and out the door. I, in slide eleven, we mentioned social connections. I'd like to understand what are the critical so- social connections for success? Uh, because that's, we, there's sort of this mixed evidence statement here, but I don't think I really understand that part of the, of the presentation very well. Uh, on slide thirteen, it talks about school overcrowding has a significant negative impact on teaching and learning. And I, I guess what I'd like to see is, is that demonstrated in the research or is that demonstrated in Fairfax County public schools? Are we seeing that our higher, uh, um, capacity, you know, the ones that are over a hundred percent underperforming or not? I think we ought to, we ought to be able to discern that a little more carefully than what's in the presentation. I'd like to see the, the overcrowding slides, uh, also showing the projections for enrollment so that we can see if we, if we believe what we're projecting, then let's see where we're going to be if we do nothing. Here's where we're going to be in terms of our overcrowding levels. So I think that's a useful thing. I, I don't know whether other board members would appreciate it. I would really like to see these very small maps in larger size, uh, for us to be able to look at in advance of the next meeting so we can look at them and digest the information a little better. Uh, I, I, I've mentioned that before. I think maybe as I get older, I can't see as well. I don't know. Uh, and I think maybe that's, that's all I've got right now.
Okay. Any comment? If not, I have a, a Mrs. Strauss.
Side by side, the projected where we will be in five years if we do nothing. So I really think this year's CIP was just wonderful because it gave us incredible data. And I, I think it's alarming if we do nothing. The other part is that when we look at the projections, you can already see that in some places where we are already going to be constructing schools or are under construction now, or renovations that are under, that are, are, uh, going forward right now, that in its, in and of itself is going to fix some of these problems. So it, it, it helps to lighten the load. Some people are fearful of going down this road. Um, so the other thing is, is particularly for, uh, middle and high school, boundary changes. Not only does it have to be an open process for everybody, but the grandfathering takes time. And if you wait too long to make those changes to where, where, where it's just untenable, you're all of a sudden then having kids, you know, a tenth grader having to change school, eleventh grader. If you are smart and begin the process and get it moving, you can have a grandfathering process that is fair and respectful to children who have, who have particularly the middle and high school, who have begun, um, uh, their relationships with their teachers, their programs, and their, their friends. So, um, uh, the other question that I would have is when we look at overcrowding, there are some, particularly middle and high schools where the overcrowding becomes a- more space, like cafeterias, you can eat on the floor in the hall, but you get to the point where you can't make it through the hallway. And it, that raises other problems unless you go to a split day and only have half of the kids in the school at any one time. We certainly don't want to go down that road. That's catastrophic. That's nineteen fifties when you couldn't build schools. We, so anyway, that's why I encourage us to, when we look at overcrowding, there's some overcrowding that is far more difficult, um, and, and very difficult to, to actually just live in because you can't move. So, um, is that it? Yes. Our other challenges, transportation and getting from here to there, and that's why I think the, the time on buses, geographic proximity, and particularly for some of our cu- some of us who have had some of the neighborhood schools and some of the additional resources that have been put in, they are put in in a concentrated area. And, um, unless we had a tremendous amount of public transportation available, you don't want to move some of your kids and your families so far away from the community that is there to support them and where the parents and the kids and everybody else can actually get to the wraparound services that we are working so hard to get. So I think it's something else to keep in mind.
Any comment? If not, I'll go to Ms. Hines.
Um, yeah, on the question of whether we have a responsibility to protect home values when we talk about boundary ch- A young guy who didn't even have kids in the school system yet come to me and say, well, I spent twenty thousand dollars more on my house than I would have a block away because it's in this school. And I had to tell him, I said, you know, our responsibility is to do what's best for kids, not to cover your real estate bet by concentrating socioeconomics in that school. So I think that when it actually comes down to brass tacks, that's the answer we always have to give to people. Um, I think that it is this board's responsibility to tee this up for the next board. In my almost eight years, we have not done one major boundary study. We have seismic issues across the county and we know it. And new board coming in, they're just going to have to kick it down the road because they won't, you know, they can, they can reject some of what we do. But I think we have a responsibility to set them up with focused priorities. And I think the fewer priorities we have, the less political it will be because the more things you have for people to grab onto as a reason. And transparency, and that's just about time. That takes time, being transparent. And if the next board takes a couple of years to set up the system, they're going to be a couple of years later in a reelection year trying to make changes and they're not going to do it. Right, and it will go another four years and we'll be in even, you know, hotter water. So, and finally, I would just say when it comes to using program placement as a way to, you know, improve diversity, I, I hope that we look critically at our history of program placement and compare our goals with our outcomes when it comes to, uh, demographic diversity. Because I think sometimes we've gone in, we've put a program in with the, the hope and the goal that it will improve, uh, demographics, and in fact, it has the opposite effect because if you build it, they will come. And we know who they are. They're the parents who are more engaged and more economically able to make those kind of choices. So, um, parent choice, uh, is, is a double-sided coin, right? And until you have five-year-olds interviewing principals, right, those choices are going to be made by parents who can. So, uh, we just have to be careful about that.
Any comment? If not, I know that I have a Mrs. McLaughlin on third round. Anybody else want to be on the third round? Okay, then I'll take my, uh, two, three minutes, maybe hopefully not two, three minutes all the way. Uh, just want to remind board members that we have a joint meeting with the county, uh, members on the county board of supervisors tomorrow at, starting at three o'clock. And second portion of that meeting tomorrow will be devoted to a CIP. In there, obviously, we'll be talking about the most recent request on additional capital funding to a board of supervisors, which was not included in the county executive's presentation to the board of supervisors. By the way, the additional twenty-five million dollar is what we did ask for last year. It's not anything new. We asked for fifty million dollars last, last year, and then they gave us twenty-five million dollars. We are, we are, we are asking for the remaining fifty, twenty-five dollar, twenty-five million dollars. Uh, and as a part of a discussion, what will come up is questions from members on the county board of supervisors about what we are doing with our underutilized capacity in various schools. And if you do not talk about, if you're not seriously talk, talking about boundary adjustments to better utilize underutilized capacity, then we will not be in really a, a, a defensible position to ask for more funding. So we have to continue diligently working on the boundary policy so that we can generate more efficiency operation of using our existing capacity. With that, I'm going to go to Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, and yes, I'm sorry if I like to ask questions. Um, so I, I did want to just actually in this regard, um, say to my colleagues some things that were said. Ms. Evans, you noted that it's important that we establish the values of the board, um, when we're talking about boundaries, and I don't disagree with that. Uh, we've been elected to represent our community, and when you're elected to be a leader, then you have to make important decisions. And we also have responsibility then to lead on those important issues. Uh, but I do want to make sure that, Dr. Braybrand, as you speak, the word that so many of us have, important that how we map this out, we cannot get ahead of our communities. We can't engage, lead, and, um, guide our communities of which we are elected to represent if we don't give them opportunity to engage with us on this. And so, um, my family and I had the benefit of living in Wake County, North Carolina, back in the early two thousands, and I've shared this with board members before. That's in the Raleigh, North Carolina area, high-performing school district, very similar to Fairfax. Um, at that time, they were having such rapid growth that they were changing their boundaries almost every other year. And the families not only had that rapid growth, but they were also trying to stabilize their socioeconomic, um, di- uh, diversity in, in their schools. They were trying to prevent what so many of my colleagues have articulated. And so that push-pull of extreme rapid growth, plus then having pockets of poverty, um, it unfortunately created such a thing that they were just changing the boundaries all the time to the point that non-Catholic families were pulling their kids out of public schools and sending them to the Catholic school in Raleigh. And if anybody knows anything about North Carolina, there's not a lot of Catholics, um, compared to up here. But people just, they wanted stability and they just said, I, I can't afford the private schools, I can afford the Catholic school. I know that's not what I'm projecting could happen here, but it was a real eye-opener for our family. And when we came back to Fairfax, we still had really young kids in elementary school. We were thrilled to come back to the stability of Fairfax. So I think anytime we talk about boundaries, we want to ensure our community that we also understand that stability in communities is also an important value. But then how do we take those important values, Ms. Evans, which you've been especially a, a key champion for saying that we can't have these pockets of poverty and what that does for student achievement? And Ms. Hines, I want to thank you again for talking about something so important tonight about the, how we all benefit from having diverse schools. And I think poverty really plays a crucial role in this and, and, uh, you know, no child, no matter, um, what their race, creed, or color, poverty is, is, is very challenging to overcome in terms of, um, student achievement if it's all concentrated there. And so we need to always strive to move beyond that. So, thank you for the time, Mr. Moon.
Anybody want to comment on that? Okay, with that, let's go to the next steps. Could you give us a little larger font? Thank, thank you, that's better. At least we have a one through five. Let's take a look at one through five, uh, with a lot of them by, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Just take a look at the language first.
I'm sorry, if there's something on here staff-wise, please share so that we have a back and forth because I know expectations around, we have a meeting in March, it's just a month from now, if there's something.
So, Dr. Program, I just want the board members to take a look at their language first, and then we'll go one by one, all right?
All right, thank you.
Okay, board members, take a look at your language.
Item three-
Okay.
Is, uh, showing placement of specialized programs, specifically special ed programs, and other, but the, the language on page two of the, um, report talk about the impact of, um, concentrating those programs in one area. So if we can have a heat map of that, I didn't mention title one. Oh, okay. Um, and then on the next one, provide percentage of out-of-district commuters on longer bus rides specifically. That's the, um, ones, I think you said multi, multi-agency.
Okay, I s- okay, Ms. Ke-
And, Mr. Moon, can I ask for a slight modification to yours, which is-
Yeah, I haven't talked yet. Uh, I, I'm looking for both research, uh, in supportive and counter-research. I want to see both. No, 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 contrary, no, no, no. I said, sh- share the research in supportive and counter-research. Could you change the beginning? Isn't, okay, now let, let's do just number one through five first, all right?
On number one, and I don't know, Leedy, do you have an annotated bibliography? Because what you did with the research is you just listed it in the back. Did you actually have someplace where you annotated, um, or summarized each one of those reports?
We can put that together. The specialist who did it, um, will, would have notes on what each of them is about, yes.
I think that would be helpful to the board so that they could then determine which ones they want to take a deeper dive in looking at.
Okay. Um, probably about half of the things in that reference list are policies from other school divisions, um, which are already summarized in appendix B, but we can summarize the rest of them as well.
I mean, there are policies from other districts on unnecessary research.
Correct.
We want the research.
Yes, no, I understand that. Mr. Moon, can I ask a question about number one? Is it slide twelve or slide seven that you wanted the counter-research to?
Oh. It's a slide seven, seven. Okay, so, uh, okay, I'm going to go through one through five as the language is all right. Okay, then with the number one, any comment from staff? Number one, is it do-over? Okay, any-
Jeff, Leedy, Jessica, if there's anything, uh, you know, for now, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll go back in a few days if there's something.
Okay, take a look at one through five if you have any concerns with any of those, tell us right now.
You might want to combine two and four since they pers- pertain to the same slide.
Uh, could I ask, Ms. Corbett Sanders, on, on number two, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I'm clear on what-
Beyond sleep. So for example, um, there has been some research on the impact of long bus rides on students' respiratory conditions and asthma. And then of course, the other piece of it, which we haven't talked about, is, um, the environmental impact of long bus rides.
Ms. Evans, are you okay with that? Okay, okay. All right, we'll go through one.
Can I, can I have a-
Yes.
Just on number five, I thought in the CIP, um, there was a new feature already identifying attendance silence. Is there not?
Yes.
Have a, we have a list on page one forty-five in the CIP.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that can be just, you know, just leave that up there since Ms. Key's got our immediate request, and you can just provide what we already had in the CIP, right? Right, right. So, uh, one, one through four, is there any objections for adopting one through four? Okay, then we are done. Let's go through number five, and let's see, we can see five through ten. Take a look at the language. Uh, Ms. Patrick isn't out here. Okay?
We'll do the best we can with the age grade. Um, we'll give you some parameter, some metric, but, uh, the age grade might be a little more challenging.
Oh, where is that?
Number six.
Number, number six, break down true.
But we'll give you something.
Age grade, okay.
Yeah, we'll give you something.
Okay.
On number, on number five-
Number five.
Where it says, send response to McLean community, I, I understand the issue, but how, how is she envisioned? I mean, she's not here unfortunately, but what, what does, do we understand what that entails? What kind of a response are we thinking we're sending and how?
I was going to help. It was a PTSA meeting that they had set up long ago. We presented the CIP. And, um, uh, at the meeting, Kevin Sneed kind of laid out until the, until a change is made, what are the modifications that are-
a change is made, what are the modifications that are going to have to be made in order to carry on school.
So is that simply saying, send out Dr. Braybrand's moratorium to the PTSA at McLean? Is that what we're, I'm not sure what that means.
You're going to have to figure out how and why, but this is, this is a school that is, that, that is having extreme problems that are going to get a whole lot worse.
Right.
And there, and it's documented in the CIP.
I, I just want to make sure that the staff knows what we're doing if we, if we approve this, you know, what-
How, how, I think this is just documenting the fact that we had received complaint and the email was directed to Dr. Braybrand today. No, to Dr. Braybrand today, and as staff normally does, they will reply to it.
Right. Right, exactly. What are we, what are we going to do in the meantime? Because there is a-
No, they're just, just asking for superintendent to respond to the, a, a sort of petition from that particular script, community. Okay, I mean, board has not made any decision on, you know, what, what to do, so. Okay, so anybody else on the language, five through 10?
For number six?
Number six, okay.
Can we provide that by school level? Elementary, middle, and high?
Okay.
I just-
Okay. Yes, sir.
And then on number seven, I think-
Okay. Is it okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I guess that's fine. It's, it's certainly more than there. I, I think on number seven, I, what I was looking at is actually seeing the maps with the CIP information as opposed to a comparison. I, I don't know if that's, that's what that means.
Okay, two maps right next to each other.
Yeah, exactly, right.
In a current versus projection, five-year projections, basically.
Yeah, and if it's possible, if we, I was serious that a larger sheet of paper-
Absolutely. I would like minimum ledger size. Okay, thank you. Okay, so anybody else from five through, I saw, okay, I'm, I'm only seeing five through nine. Okay, so, all right, five through nine, is there any objection? Okay, five through nine, is there any objection for adopting those as next step? If not, okay, we'll go to 10. 10, please. Okay, 10 through 13.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, do you want all pupil placements taken out or just certain ones? Because, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about, I mean, pupil placements are for a lot of different reasons. We've got special education programs, we've got immersion, we've got AAP-
So, we've got military-
We've got AP, IB. Do you want the whole kit and caboodle, or are you, are you thinking about things that are more like voluntary requests for pupil placement?
So voluntary requests, which would include a child decides to go to one school because they want the AP program versus an IB program or the inverse of that, or so-
Do you want childcare? Because childcare is the most common.
Child, I'm not sure.
Well, special education is-
At the elementary-
Special education is a huge one, too. And so I, I'm wondering if that fits into what you're looking-
But that's a program placement.
I think it counts as a pupil placement, though, does it not? I mean, well, maybe if, if you don't want it, then we should say you don't want it.
Let, let, let us, for staff, try to bring you everything, and then you can decide as a board what you don't want to count as, in a sense, for boundary purposes, that placement. I'd rather just try to show all of it to you than leave a-
As long as it's disaggregated.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, I have to go back with staff and find out how, how disaggregated we have our pupil placement information. Do you know, Jessica?
Well, this is a rather complex question to get to the capacity, which is what we would be trying to demonstrate. So pulling the capacity, to recalculate the capacity for each of the programs that are there, is that, I'm not really sure if we pull, if we pull pupil placement, like the number of students that transfer to the school, do we still have a capacity issue? Is that the question you're asking?
Correct. Because what happens is if you have a massive shift over a summer based on a new state regulation, then you've taken a school that was under capacity so that it's now almost a peak, and you've taken a school that, where you had a balance between schools. And so if we are talking about doing any sort of boundaries, it shouldn't be exasperated by people's choice to go beyond the boundary because effectively you've had a boundary light made without any sort of oversight. And so it's really creating a much more balanced approach.
So, so let's do this, let's do this. You know, let's allow superintendent and staff members to see what they can come up with, okay?
Yep.
And if, you know, you know, if you're not happy with what they provide, you can ask for further information. So, uh-
I think number 12 can be deleted.
Number 12 to be deleted, okay? Mr. Wilson wants to have that deleted, okay? Right. So, uh-
Just, just real quickly, sorry, on, on 11, I just think it'd be more helpful to have a positive map, just mapping out the pupil placements going to the school as opposed to pulling them out of another map, just so you could see the, well, that, I would like to see that.
We can have, so can I ask you about these school students around the school?
No, I just want a map of pupil placements. So if, if you have, if you have 50 students going from, from Lee to Edison, you can see that, for example.
Yeah, but what you would show is only one school showing capacity, whereas what I'm saying is you have to show both. You have to show they came, the gazentas and the gazaltas, you know, basically-
Sure.
They moved from here to there.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right. 10 through 12, is there any objection to adopt those? Okay, adopted, and we'll go to, is that last two, 13 and 14? Yay, all right. Take a look at the language, Ms. Wilson, those are yours. All fine? Okay, staff, any, any concerns?
Can I ask you? How do you define underperforming?
Well, the, the, the report suggests that overcrowding leads to underperformance. And so I didn't look at any of the research, of course, but my question was, is that in the research, or are we also seeing that in Fairfax County's schools?
So you mean higher, you mean overcrowding, not higher capacity?
I think, Mr. Wilson, I think page number 13 says, they got an impact on teaching and learning.
Teaching and learning, right. So, so I, that, yeah, so the, I don't know that you're right, it may not be capacity as much as if it's overcrowded, I think was what the, what the slide goes to. But it's just, it's just really a question of whether or not we're seeing the same thing that the research shows in our own schools.
I am wondering how we're going to determine that, you know, if-
So could we, could we, yeah, could we do it this way, like, that's the first bullet on slide number 13, just ask staff to provide data for that, you know, that claim or that Mr. Wilson, is it 14, okay?
They're both fine, Mr. Moon.
Okay, staff has any concern with 13 and 14? If not, board members, are they acceptable? If no objection, those are adopted, and this work session is adjourned, 9 to 9 o'clock, sharp.
Whoa, Mr. Moon!
Well, with that, may I continue managing this boundary discussion and next month or so?
Talk to the chair.
I shall do it then.